Don Armstrong. Brenda Coley.
Present.
Ms. Hollinger. James Pierce.
Present.
We have a quorum present. Public comments, audience participation, required to read any comments regarding any specific agenda items that were submitted by 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, June 16, 2020.
No.
No comments were submitted. Next item is Chancellor's update, Mr. Annapolis.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have a couple of things. First, we're moving into Phase Three openings in Texas, as you know, for this pandemic. And one of the things that, excuse me, is on the Governor's executive order, is opening up areas for Fourth of July celebrations. Mr. Pierce asked about opening up our campus. Excuse me, I had to run to get my glasses, I can't see. And so, we went through this and I engaged the deputies and Dr. Carter engaged her team. And so, we are opening up the parking lots for the Fourth of July celebration. Fort Hood is going to have their fireworks. And so, as you know, everybody wants to park on our campus and they want to park everywhere they can drive their vehicle. So, Mr. Harmson and his crew will be putting out the orange barriers to guide people to the right areas. So, so that we will apply by all of the social distancing and those kinds of things. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that at this point.
Are we going to have trash cans out the area and porta potties?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, otherwise it would be a mess and that was discussed. So, that will be taken care of. Now, if people want to come out here, they'll take lawn chairs and so forth and go over in that big grassy area to the east of our campus and plot out there and that's, that's fine. But we're not going to let them drive out into that field. It's, it's pretty grassy and wet, so. The parking lots will all be available to them, so I think that's a good thing. The only other thing I have to talk about for just a minute is the upcoming board meetings for July. The way things are moving forward, and you're going to hear in a minute from the three deputies on reopening of our campus, I am going to suggest that we perhaps consider having our Fourth, our July Board Workshop and our July Board Meeting on campus in person. And we'll probably have to use the Campus Center, the big one that we used before to do that. We'll have to set up those chairs to accommodate a board meeting, workshop, and then reconfigure it for the board meeting to make it look differently. So, I think if, if I could kind of poll everybody and get your, your thoughts and feelings on coming together in July. If, if not, we will continue like we are through the month of July. You know, there's, if you listen to everything that the CDC is talking about and World Health Organization's, and you see what the spike is right now, 25 states have spiked in their their positive test cases for coronavirus now. Is that because there's more tests given or more people getting it? I don't know. That, you know, the numbers are going up. And Texas is on that list and two of the cities most impacted by that are Houston and Austin. So, I'm sure a lot of it is because people aren't succumbing to social distancing and aren't wearing masks and aren't doing all of the things that protected them two, three months ago. We've been in this half for three months and people have heard of talk this would happen. So, I, I make that opportunity for us to come together. But if you don't feel that we should do that right now in July, we can certainly wait till August. So, any, any opinions or feedback or comments?
Jim, Jimmy Towers, a couple of things. One is, I trust your judgment when we get to that point. One thing I would suggest if we meet again publicly, that you put the tables on a more of a harsh shoe basis so we can see each other face to face. But I appreciate the, all the work that your staff does to set up those meetings. I'm comfortable with doing what we're doing right now, but I see the value in us getting back together when we can.
One thing we've got to do, we have now a executive session and we probably need to do that at the July meeting rather than the workshop because we've got to take a vote. And we're going to have to get together at least for that. So, whether or not we, we meet both of them, I don't have an opinion except the second meeting, we knew, we do need to be together. We have to take a vote. And it has to be executive session, so.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to do that executive session the way we're doing it online because you have to come back after the session, close the meeting, so. Brenda, I'll see your hand.
No, you didn't, you didn't see my hand, but I will share with you my opinion. I would like to see us only come back together when necessary. And it sounds like the July workshop meeting will be necessary, so I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Tal, do you have an opinion?
I think we ought to get together.
Okay, Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir. My opinion and my recommendation is that we start meeting together again because it shows people that we're able to meet and, and make decisions for the college instead of by internet, which is not, it's not personal enough. But we can stay spread out whenever, whenever we meet in public. But people need to see us together functioning as a body.
Mr. Baby? Okay. Look, I'm not, I'm not getting the information. I've got my hearing aid in and my phone goes directly hearing aid and it's a little bit broken. So, could you speak very slowly and tell me again what you said? Okay. All right. Yeah, horseshoe table would be preferable, I agree.
Go ahead.
I guess we will meet in person for both the workshop and the meeting for July. That's what the consensus is. There are no objections, is what else you got?
Okay, that, that's all I have. So, we will plan on the July workshop and the July board meeting in person on campus in the Anderson Center.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the Title IX update and the Title IX case summary report, Ms. Jordan.
Well, and actually, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Starkey. She's going to provide the report this time.
Okay. In your board packet, you should have gotten two handouts from Holly and me. One is called the Title IX Summary Report during the 2019-20 academic year to date. And the other is Summary of Title IX New Regulations. I'm going to do the first one, the summary report for the academic year first. And this is information about our cases this past semester. Holly gave the report after the fall semester and we had seven cases in the fall. We had five more here in the spring. And this report just kind of outlines the number of reports that we had, then the number of investigations. As you can see, we are, we try to be very cautious about these cases. And if we get a report, we do turn it into an investigation because we want to be very thorough. There is a slight difference and it was just because of resources. We got contacted and a person needed resource information only. But then we also provide information about the disposition of those cases and what happened in those situations. And so, we outline all of that in the summary report. This is the information that we will also post online as required by the state legislature. So, that was that, unless you have any questions. The next piece is the summary of the new regulations. I'm sure most of you are aware that the Department of Education did release new guidelines back in May. We did have a heads up that there were going to be some changes, so we were somewhat prepared for that. And we have been meeting to try to make updates and changes so that we will be ready for everything. I'm going to go over just some of the highlights and then if Holly wants to jump in and add anything, certainly she can. The first big change is in the definition, scope, jurisdiction of Title IX. One little word that can make a big difference. In, in the old regs, it was sexual harassment that was severe pervasive or objectively offensive. And now they changed that or to and, which for us does make a big difference in what we do, but that's one of the changes. There's also some changes in terms of location and where an incident happens and what, we'll have to pay attention to that. We also have to really pay attention to, they have to be current students, current employees. It has to be in a current program activity, that kind of thing, and so we have to pay attention to those things. There's also some information about how we resolve certain complaints. We always had the option of resolving them both through a formal and informal process. Informal is, would be more like through a mediation type setup. But one of the big changes is if we have a situation involving a staff member and a student, it has to go through the formal process. Now, we don't, we don't have any kind of options on that one. Probably the most changes that we saw in, in the regs have to do with the formal process and, and how we receive complaints. Our, as Title IX coordinators, what constitutes actual knowledge of those. And so, now, we have always here at PTC, all of our employees are responsible employees. They have to let us know when there are issues. But as Title IX coordinators now, we have to actually have a formal written complaint from the complaining party, which is a little different than the way it was in the past. Also, all the parties have, there are more due process protections that are, have been included in terms of notice of allegations, access to evidence. And then there's going to be a lot of changes regarding this formal process. And when I'm talking about a formal process, I'm usually talking about live hearings, which is what we're going to have to go to when we resolve these. And that will be somewhat, you know, of a, of a change because witnesses have to be present. We can do it, you know, digitally like what we're doing here, but witnesses can be cross-examined and all of that information. As a result of the live hearings, though, it does require a few more staff to be involved in our process. And so, we're working through that issue. So, Title IX coordinators and investigators, we've already had in line. But we're also looking at adding more advisors for the students and the employees that are going through the process, as well as hearing board members and how we're going to get that worked out. The only other thing that I will mention is training. They made a big to-do about training. We have always had a robust training for faculty, staff, students, and those of us involved in this process. We are, we are trained, but we now have to post all that information on, online. The big thing is, is all of this, we have to be in compliance by August 14th. So, that's our big date and we will be in compliance by August 14th. Holly, additions?
No, I think the only other thing that I would add is that from discussions that Julie and I have had, we actually anticipate that our number of Title IX complaints will decrease because many of the situations that we've had previously would not meet the new regulations, would not fit within those guidelines. So, although we anticipate the formal process to be more complex, we actually anticipate that there will be a decrease in the number of Title IX complaints.
We will still resolve those issues, but we'll just use either the HR process or the Code of Student Conduct process. So, I don't want to, we'll, we'll still take care of them, though.
Right, right. We're, we will always address issues. And those that we can utilize the informal process, it tends to be very effective. And so, we'll continue to do that.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Starkey and Holly. The next item is the Foundation Board nomination. Ms. Susan Fergus has been recommended, Ms. Chambers. Marcine, you out there?
I don't see you, sir. If not, I will bring, bring that forward. As you know, you're on the, on the Foundation Board along with Ms. Coley. And the recommendation is come to that board to add a new board member in the form of Susan Fergus. Susan is a longtime resident of the Clean Temple area and her, she's related to a past board member, Glenn Fergus. And so, she comes to us with a lot of experience in fundraising, a lot of experience with the Temple Scott and White Hospital fundraising. And so, I think it's, it's a good fit and a good addition to our, to our Foundation Board.
We'll take that under advisement at our meeting next week. The next item is the Alliant Property Insurance Contract Withdrawal, Dr. Carter.
Good afternoon. I have to turn on the mic. Alliant Insurance, as, as you see in your handout, Alliant Insurance is our current, is the current provider of our property insurance for coverage throughout Texas and throughout the continental, at the continental sites. The estimated property value in total is about $247 million. Alliant is one of three vendors who are currently providing a comprehensive insurance package to the college. However, they are the only vendor with a renewal date of July 1. That occurred in the middle of the contracting period last year when we solicited the new pre, quotes for the new premiums. And the previous company providing the coverage, it was extremely excessive. So, we were able to not really realize a savings, but pay a little less than what they were required, what the other company was offering. And we went with Alliant. So, that's how we ended up with the July 1 renewal date. This is the fourth option period of the, the contract. You will recall that in 2016, we issued an RFP for a comprehensive insurance package. And we ended up making multiple awards to Arthur J. Gallagher, Bigum Cleaver, Chapman Watts, and, and Alliant. So, at this time, we are going to solicit the board's approval next week to renew services with Alliant in the amount of $430,930 in premiums, $400,000, excuse me, $930 in premiums for this coverage. This does include wind and hail. It does include a buy down on the wind and hail deductible from a million dollars to $100,000. So, that was really good for us. And unless there are any questions, it's a pretty routine item, nothing new. But it is definitely something that is required and necessary.
Any questions to Dr. Carter? And Dr. Carter, the Lot and Vernon and Company DC contract withdrawal?
Yes, sir. As you know, Lot Vernon is, currently provides the college's external auditing services. We've been with them for approximately close to 20 years. They haven't had, they've had to rebid multiple times, though. So, and we use a professional services procurement process as outlined by the state. So, they've been handling our business for the, like I said, since 2000, 2001, I think it is. And they review our financial statements, evaluate internal financial controls, compliance with state and federal laws, et cetera. And they've done an excellent job. As you know, you've met them and they report out to you annually. Mr. Liberty, our Associate Deputy Chancellor for Financial, Financial Management. And Mr. Doug Barton, your internal auditor. They work closely, both work closely with Lot Vernon and have been very pleased with, with the service provided. And so, during next week's meeting, we will seek approval to exercise the final option period of their contract in the amount of $68,000.
Any questions to Dr. Carter? Next item is the planned phase for reopening Central Texas College. Yeah, Dr. Carter?
Dr. Carter, before you, before you speak, I'd like to say a couple of words here before we get into the next three items, kind of to bring this in. You know, as, as you know, we've all been working the last three months, three plus months to, to get back to what we would consider a normal, a normal operation, a, a normal college. I don't know that we'll ever get back to being a normal college, but we'll see it as this thing rolls on. One of the things I'd like to say is that, and you know this as well as all the rest of you, that we have the greatest staff in the world. Three of the best deputies and the senior staff that anybody could ever have. And they have really stepped into the plate. And they have spent hundreds of hours, and I mean hundreds of hours, in articulating two documents. One is a six-phase procedure for reopening our campus. And the other one is the Return to Campus Plan, and they will be going over that in just a minute. In doing that, there's, they formed a work group. And I, I asked Dr. Carter to be the, the action officer for this entire project because the majority of everything we're going to be doing has to go through her or through one of her designated direct reports. And so, the reopening work group, it would include, and does include, someone from risk management, someone from human resources, studies in construction, then student service, student success and persistence, which is under Dr. Garrett, community relations and marketing, which is Dr. Garrett, business services, and campus police, which are all under Dr. Carter. And then the, the second part of that would be the faculty and staff, which all come under Dr. Ayden. So, I just want you to know that they have spent a lot of hours on this. They've looked at every protocol that exists, I believe, in the United States. They've been on weekly phone calls with TACC and the Coordinating Board with me. They have looked at the institutions of higher education protocols. We even have a copy of the Texas A&amp;M campus and college station and how they're going to reopen, what they're going to do. And I, I believe that our policy, our procedures and our, all of our guidance surpasses any of those that we've seen in total. So, at this point, I would like Dr. Carter is going to start off and then followed by Dr. Ayden, Dr. Garrett, and then followed by Dr. Ayden. So, Dr. Carter, please.
Sure. Chancellor, thank, thank you for introducing this item. The, the two documents that were forwarded to you this morning are, they're living documents. I mean, we're, we, we've been working on them right up until this morning because you didn't receive them until before 11 o'clock or around that time because we are constantly looking at what's going on around us. We're constantly running scenarios and so, but we knew at some point we had to finalize the document in order to get it posted and inform employees on what's going on. When I said it's a living document, it is just that. So, we could very well need to make a revision tomorrow or next week. And I think everyone has, has quickly learned that in this fluid and ever-evolving environment, our ability to adapt and pivot has been crucial to, to what I believe is our success in continuing to deliver quality education and training to, to our students. The chancellor mentioned the, the work group and, and, and the representation from the different areas. This work group has been, they've been very patient with me. They've, they've received my emails at nine or 10 o'clock at night or three in the morning and they've been extremely responsive. And so, I, I really wanted to just take this opportunity to name them. And, and that includes Mr. Mark Harmson, Ms. Holly Jordan, Dean Julie Starkey, Mr. Ted Gonzalez, Ms. Barbara Merlow, Ms. Deborah Shively, Mr. David Hickman, Chief Joseph Barrigan, and Mr. Scott Wyman. They have been amazing to, to work with. And much of what you see in front of you is because of them, as well as the deputy chancellors and, and all of our direct reports, to include questions that we solicited from the various areas. So, we didn't do this in a silo. We, we created avenues for, for folks to, to have a voice and to, to provide feedback to, to the administration. So, I just wanted to get that out of the way. The first document that I would like to go over is the Six-Phase Procedure for Reopening. And this is more or less a framework-type document to say, this is, this, this is the document that will keep us on track in terms of which phase we're in. So, we're currently coming out of Phase One, which we've been in since the announcement of the pandemic while we were on spring break in March. And we are about to move into Phase Two. If I can draw your attention to Page Two, Section Four, the proposed timeline. These are timelines for us to implement our, the various areas. Staffing, the protocols to bring back staff, the, how many to bring back at one time, the staffing levels that we'll actually have on site. Each phase takes into consideration that, as well as student support services, and obviously the most important instruction, and then many of our ancillary services. So, that's why within each phase, you see those, those four items sectioned off so that we know exactly what we're doing and when we're doing it. The, so I won't go into a lot of detail with this because the, the deputy, the other two deputy chancellors will both discuss their, their respective areas. But the, one of, one of the beautiful things about this document and what makes it so practical is that at any given time, the chancellor can review this document. Our, our, our goal was to create a playbook because there truly is no playbook for the pandemic, but CTC needed one, so to speak. And we needed for the chancellor to have this. And so, what this will allow him to do is to evaluate what's going on at the state and national level, look at the phase we're in and determine if we're in the right phase or if we need to make a change. So, if we find ourselves in Phase Four where we're just rocking along, we're back in the classroom, everybody's on campus, but there is a surge or something happens, the chancellor can quickly pull this document and say, I want us to go back to Phase Two. And everyone will immediately know what Phase Two means as it relates to staffing, instructions, student support services, and all those ancillary services that we provide. So, this is a, this is a framework document. It's a part of his playbook and he's pleased, so we're pleased and we hope you are too. The next document, Return to Campus Plan. This document is, it's a little more detailed and it's meant to help us navigate the return to campus. It's an overview. We, we purposefully made it a, a little broader than the other document, but not as prescriptive because what we have learned is just when you think you know every scenario, you don't. And so, what we've done is created some guidelines for faculty and staff and students to, to follow. Many of these, this document will be posted and all of the reference documentation will be provided in links. So, we have self-reporting forms, self-assessment forms, different HR policies. All of those are embedded in this document and will be provided. You can access them with, with a click. So, just a couple of things about this document. The first thing I think is really important, super important to notice is that we have two key individuals that will support this, this effort. And that is Ms. Barbara Merlow. She, she is critical to the communication with our campus community and our community at large to make sure our message gets out and, and, and students know what we're doing. And so that they can, they can register, they can come on campus, they can get the services that they need. So, that's going to be really important. And then also the COVID-19 liaison. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board recommended that each school identify a COVID-19 liaison to coordinate with local health and state officials if necessary and ensuring that CTC is compliant with all protocols. Workplace expectations, if we can jump over to Page Two. And I won't go into this document in detail, just want to highlight a couple of things. One of the things that's, that's really noteworthy is that in preparing the campus and, and the staff to come back, what's critical is a, a training. When we come, when we left in March, it was under normal circumstances. The pandemic was, was pending and we prepared. The pandemic was, was pending and we prepared, but we were all in our offices, everybody was on campus, students were in the classroom. Well, we come back to a very new and different environment now, and so that's gonna take some training on everyone's part. And so, Ms. Jordan, um, Ms. Starkey, and a, and a team of those in our core work group, uh, they created a training for all students and employees, and, uh, and we're pretty proud of that, and it will be posted to our website as well. Let's see. I'd also like to jump over to page five, our health and safety guidelines. One of the things that, uh, people are really concerned about is interaction with people and, uh, anyone exhibiting symptoms and, um, anyone diagnosed or possible exposures. Well, this section here clearly spells out, uh, what the college will do in those instances. The hope is that we will ease concerns and, uh, and, and let employees know that there is a process. A critical part of this process is a self-reporting form, so employees will do a self-assessment, as well as students, uh, prior to coming to campus, and if they're experiencing any of those symptoms, or they meet any of this criteria, rather than come to campus, they will click on the self-reporting form, and, uh, it will automatically go to either Holly Jordan in HR, or someone in her staff, or Dean Julie Starkey, uh, this dean of student, uh, excuse me, student success and persistence. So, she will handle all students, and Ms. Jordan will handle, uh, employees. So, I think this is really important to note, so that people understand we do have a process. Um, in preparing the workplace, for the workplace, we've identified several personal safety practices to include face coverings. We will require face coverings. Uh, we know what the CDC says about face coverings, uh, and obviously, if you're in a room alone or you work privately, you, you won't have to wear one, but this is a, is protocol necessary, not only for you, but for others. Um, i- it's very necessary. I heard someone say, people will go where they feel safe, and this, this protocol is very necessary. Uh, the college will provide face coverings for those who choose not to wear their own, and, uh, students will, will, students will be required to wear their, uh, to bring their own, um, but we will have extras on hand, um, as, as needed. So, uh, the other thing that we did, Mr. Harmson and his staff, you've probably been to different locations, and you've seen the, the Plexiglas and the different barriers. Well, Mr. Harmson and his carpentry shop, they actually built our, uh, workplace protective barriers, and so we're pretty proud of that, saved, saved quite a few dollars there, and we are act, we're putting those up all over campus, particularly in those areas where, uh, the employees meet regularly with students. We will obviously practice social distancing, hand hygiene, uh, respiratory hygiene, and the nursing department, um, was kind enough to put together several videos, uh, for, for these items, and they're embedded in this document as well. Um, so those are just some of the highlights. I encourage you to read them. Uh, I, I believe that it's a very comprehensive document, and again, it's a, it's a living document, so any changes that we need to make, uh, we will. Are there any questions before I pass it off to Dr. Garrett?
Dr. Carter, I have a, I have a, a question for you. You had a, you had an example, you have an example, or we have an example, of an employee that did self-report. Do you want to share that?
Sure. So, we had this document, and we thought it was perfect. Well, not perfect, but as close as we could get it under the circumstances. And what happened was we had a, we had an employee self-report over the weekend without this document being published as of yet, and his situation didn't quite fit, but we quickly realized that it was one we needed to capture in this document. So, employees are extremely conscientious, they're being very diligent, and as a result of that, we were able to make this change, were able to accommodate him, and, uh, it, it, it turned out well. Uh, no one, no one is, no, no one's infected, um, but the self-reporting helped us to quickly mitigate and determine what needed to be done on his behalf and on behalf of the college.
Dr. Carter, I don't have a question, Mrs. Brenda Colley.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment. Um, this morning, when it arrived, for some reason, I, I just, I knew you were writing to us, so I went, I read my email, I read my emails. I was familiar with this, um, before the meeting. I am, uh, was amazed by the six-phase procedure for reopening and the detail, um, the timelines. Um, um, you guys, uh, you know this, um, this was an, is an exceptional document. Um, you know, just the whole process of thinking through the phrases, phases, and, and taking a look at the timelines. It's a document that anyone, I believe, anyone, our students, faculty, and even board members can understand. And so, I really, really was impressed.
Thank you. I, I would like to also put out, I, I don't want it to be remiss of me, in finalizing these documents, particularly the phases, because the phases really guided the, the second document, a lot of work went into that with the deputy chancellors. Um, I don't know that we've had an opportunity to be more collaborative and cooperate, uh, cooperative with one another, um, but we started out with four, then quickly realized we might need five, and so we said, leave, leave room for six. But a lot of work went into that with the, with, with, uh, with the DCs. I'm, I'm just so honored, really just honored, uh, to, to work with Dr. Ayden and Dr. Garrett. So, it was definitely a team effort on that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carter. Uh, that email went out today, as, uh, Ms. Colley talked about, with the phrase reopening campus plan. Uh, I would add that paper copies may be requested from Ms. Deborah Havens, if anybody needs a, a hard copy of that, because they can't use the email or their email didn't, didn't print out or whatever. So, we've got plenty of opportunities to reread that and make comments on it. And the other thing I would remind everybody, as well as plans can be made, they do not survive first contact with the enemy. So, you gotta be flexible. We've got to take every situation, uh, as, as we understand what's happening and be capable of adjusting what we need to do. And I think y'all are on target with that. I think we've got a good background. A lot of people have had a lot of years of experience here, so I don't think it's gonna be a problem. But I just remind you, just because you got it right, it doesn't mean that you can't change it and say, hey, oh, we gotta, we gotta take this into account.
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely. Every, everybody working on this, the work group, the administration, the DCs, the chancellor, everyone understands that this, by the close of business today, there could be a revision.
There you go.
And...
Yes.
The chancellor, the chancellor made one right before I sent it to you.
Uh, and, and Rick, you're correct, and, you know, one of the things that we, we face right now is this resurgence that may happen in the no- the timeframe, and so, we've made accommodations for that with our classes, and we'll hear about that as, as we roll through this. But if there is a resurgence, as Dr. Carter said, we can fall back to phase two or phase three or wherever we're at, so, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, the next item is the reopening for all student support services. Dr. Garrett?
Yes, good afternoon. Uh, first of all, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Carter for the diligence and the time and all the work that she put in, helping us through developing this. She's an amazing leader, and, and I'm honored to have worked with her through this. So, thank you so much, Dr. Carter. As far as student, um, services, student support, all of that, um, it's, it's pretty simple as far as the document goes. Um, we are going to, uh, begin in, uh, on June 29th, seeing students by appointment only. Um, that, the, the virtual appointments have been working very well. We've even had comments from students that say they appreciate the opportunity to, to hold the appointments virtually, because it saves them from exposing themselves and coming out. So, we will continue the virtual appointments through all of the phases. Um, I've always wanted to go, uh, since I got here, move to appointments, and, and, I don't want to say this was a blessing in any means, but, um, this is, this has forced us to really, really, uh, ensure that we utilize appointments to see our students, and we don't have, um, social distancing issues by the, the, um, many, many students that just show up into our student services buildings and, and hang out for hours upon end. So, this will hopefully stop that, that, um, old, old process that, that's kind of been in everybody's mind of having to show up and sit and wait for hours. And so, the, the work that is, has been done to bring the ability for students to come back is, is lot, for student services, for the library, for student, um, success and persistence, all of that, it's all based on technology, and, um, Cliff Gaines and his team have been amazing, helping our areas bring the technology to the students and bring the technology to our staff at home, at the office, everywhere, helping them get set up so that we can use the, the tools that we have at our, at our disposal to serve our students. Now, as we work through these phases, for the most part, it's going to remain by appointment only, as I said, with virtuals also, and, um, that includes the library, that includes testing. Testing, uh, believe it or not, is poised to go virtual also. Um, they're working on that right now, so, um, they'll be able to do some testing virtually, but they'll do appointment only based on the ability to totally social distance in that, in the various testing rooms. Um, admissions, advising, all of that, appointments and virtual. Um, one of the areas, oh, tutoring has been doing virtual even before the pandemic, which is, was easy to, to continue that transition. The, um, residence hall, however, um, as a team, uh, the chancellor, the three deputies, uh, Dean Starkey and the residence hall manager, Victoria, we, um, we decided that it was best to keep the residence hall closed through the fall, um, ensuring the safety of our students and the, um, guidance and the guidelines that we would have to follow should an outbreak happen in the residence hall, um, was very extensive and, um, and ensuring the health is monitored of these students should anything happen. We just felt that keeping the residence hall closed for the fall would be the best at this time, and, and we'll look at it for the spring. Um, students, uh, Victoria's been working with the students that, that have inquired and, and tried to, and said they wanted to come in, and, uh, she's been a blessing helping those students out. Victoria will be working, um, very closely with, with, uh, Dean Starkey and, uh, various other areas to continue student support throughout the fall. Uh, she's an amazing tool that we have, and, uh, the students love her, so we'll be able to utilize her abilities very well. Um, one thing that you'll see on the website very soon is a document that was brought to my attention by Dr. Carter, that another institution, uh, put up, that was, it's, it's a grid, it's a chart of all the, the services and, and in each of the phases, how they can get those services. So, we will, we're in the process of finalizing that, and that will be up on the web. So, if a student is looking for testing, they can see, okay, during these days, we're in phase three, um, testing, I can call for an appointment, and, or I could do virtual, and, and then it'll, you show them a link to where they can go to get that information, how to make the appointment, or how to do a virtual test, or anything like that. So, that document will be very helpful for students moving forward. I think, oh, and the other thing we're working on are handouts to put on the doors, so that students, if they walk up to a door and they don't have an appointment, they'll be able to have something that gives them step-by-step instructions on how to make an appointment. So, um, that's about it. Disability Support Services, um, they've been, uh, great doing it virtual. They're one of the, the groups that really appreciates the virtual, um, assistance. So, I, I think we're on track, and the phases will, will just, um, will work through them and make sure that we continue supporting our students. Oh, one thing I forgot, um, it's interesting, I reviewed, uh, all of the student comments from the spring semester, and many of the students were very appreciative of our, our ability to serve them virtually, but a lot of them are looking forward to being able to come back and, and get help in person. So, I believe these appointments will be very helpful, starting in, what, less than two weeks. That's good.
Mr. Weaver, I'd like to make a comment, if I could, uh, and, uh, we need to thank, uh, Dr. Garrett for all the work that she and her, her staff have done. As you know, or maybe you, you don't know, but I know that Bill Beebe knows, it goes back, uh, I'm not, I couldn't say hundreds of years, but it's pretty close. I've been wanting for us to move to a virtual student services operation, and prior to this, we couldn't get there. Dr. Garrett came on board, and I, I gave her all the leeway in the world to make that happen. Well, the first, the first challenge was to turn people's, uh, uh, attention spans to a different mode of operation, which she's been able to do, but it's taken a while. And then the second part is, is, is the funding mechanisms to, that we need in order to bring all of these things together electronically, so, uh, I, I guess, going forward, we're going to see a different, uh, we're gonna look differently to students. I think it's going to be a welcome change. I think it's going to be a way that we can really, uh, reach out to students that we haven't been able to do in the past, and so, uh, thanks to her and especially to her and her staff for, uh, making all of that happen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any questions to Dr. Garrett? Seeing none, then we'll move to item number 10, which is the Westford Faculty and Education Program. It's Dr. Ayden. Is Dr. Ayden with us? Guess not, but that, uh, those comments are in the email that went out today, so you can, uh, tune into that. Uh, next item...
Can you hear me now?
Uh, next item...
Can you hear stuff?
Uh, next item... There you are. Thought we had lost you, Dr. Ayden.
Turn off, turn off one of them. There you go, Tim.
You have to unmute yourself. There you go. You bet.
Um, I want to give you a little bit of updates about our courses, and I remember talking to people in the... we... group, uh, of courses, oh, to online courses. Our classes in, uh, in, we moved completely online, but we are moving into a, let me try, you can hear me better than... Okay, so what we're doing for the summer semester, we are, um, online. We have online classes, um, and what we're doing for the fall semester, um, starting on the 24th of August on our campus, is that we will be able to offer blended as well as online courses. Um, what we will do, though, come Thanksgiving, um, our blended courses that are partially done in the classroom, uh, will move into, um, an online format. So, the last two weeks that, of the semester that are in December, uh, will be online. Um, you... There are some hands-on labs, um, that would include, for example, um, our personal programs in culinary and industrial tech. Um, so those programs, uh, we will continue with small group labs. We schedule the students, um, like we have done before. Um, the modifications we do in the classroom is that we really cannot entertain, uh, full-size classes, um, so the number of students in the classroom, um, have to be half the students or less. So, the blended format in which we teach our courses will be that, um, half or less than half the students will be in the classroom, the other half will be online, um, and also what... And also, what our instructors use is a format, Blackboard Collaborative, in which they can cast the courses to students. So that is another option that we use. So come Thanksgiving, after that, we will be online. For the spring semester 2021, we think we will be able to continue with online and blended courses. Hopefully, spring two, in the March timeframe, we will be able to have some face-to-face stand-up lecture classes only. But we have a little bit of time, really until October, when we sub, able to assess the situation. Also, in Fort Hood, we are following suit what we are doing on central campus, which means we are going to a blended format with small groups of classes coming to, or small groups of students coming to the classroom. At our continental sites, the ESOs have been very hesitant to open sites yet. And so for the most part, our employees are working remotely, and any planning also involves coming back in small groups. So no more than 10 students in a classroom. Let's see. Continuing it are our courses, of course, our for our non-credit courses, we have really expanded our selection of online programs. We have contracts with ProTrain and with other folks that provide online training. So to a large part, we will do online training through continuing it, and we will have some limited physical education courses that we will have in small groups. Adult educations are comprised of our ESL and GED courses. And so adult education, we continue largely in a blended and in an online format. As far as operations, our Fort Hood campus is really following suit what Dr. Garrett is doing with the central campus. The same with our service area and our continental sites. We will be seeing students by appointment only if they are not able to connect with us remotely. But we will be following suit, same process as what Dr. Garrett is doing in her area. Of course, we're appreciative of the barriers that we have, the social distancing, wearing masks, having cleaning supplies, all that will be standard really for all of our sites. We have approval to open our gym and, our education, I mean, sorry, physical education center and auditorium for classes in the fall. And so of course, there have to be quite a few cleaning procedures after students use weights and, you know, other areas in that facility. So thankfully, there's, we have a great group that will look and make sure this will safely happen. Also, we will be bringing forward a request to potentially reopen our childcare center. It seems like every week, we have received different guidance on what this childcare center operation will look like. So our department chair drafted a plan, and a week or so later, it is completely different. All the guidelines that were given as far as taking temperature and things have been changed to, really, we don't have to do that. But I assure you, as you probably see in the documents that Dr. Carter provided, we want to make sure our students are safe. They feel safe, they want to come to campus. So I think in many cases, we will exceed expectations and exceed the requirements what others impose on us. So our plan is, you know, to still check on the children that are coming to the facility, make sure they're healthy. And let's see, we are also in contact with our dual-credit students with KIST. We have weekly phone calls to make sure that they understand what format we are offering classes in, that we understand what their needs are, and so that everyone is really well-prepared to return to campus. And, you know, we're very thankful for the faculty that were involved in changing courses over from face-to-face to online and really afford students to continue their education. One thing I would like to mention, a site where we're really not sure what will happen or when we can resume instruction is at the prison and gates zone. We have some units that have opened up and others have not. So we really have to see when we are able to come back. We were able to finish out the spring semester by providing some really correspondence to students. The instructor would give them assignments that students would complete, and then instructors would, you know, score and evaluate those. But for now, the prison education has been canceled for the summer semester, and we don't know yet if we can resume instruction in the fall. So we are waiting for further guidance from the Texas Department of Local Justice.
Mr. Weaver, I'd like to say something here if I could, follow up with Dr. Adie. First of all, and I did to thank Dr. Adie and her staff for all of the good work they've done, and especially for the faculty. They were tremendous in turning this in an easy direction. I can assure you that the other community colleges throughout the state of Texas did not make such an easy transition from classroom to online. We started three and a half years ago, and I insisted that our face-to-face faculty become familiar with all the technology that was available to them and to us, and that they become familiar with it because at some point, they might have to use that. I was thinking that Fort Hood might deploy most of the soldiers out of here, and I didn't want to give all the money back to those students. I wanted them to finish their courses, and that faculty was going to have to do that. I didn't anticipate a pandemic, but needless to say, it worked for us. So when they transitioned over and they could use Blackboard, Blackboard Collaborative, a biometric signature to do their testing, I mean, it just made it so much easier. The students, we didn't have any complaints. I've had no complaints from students or faculty really on any of this, and I just wanted to thank them for doing that. You know, Dr. Adie mentioned the blended classes, and I want to make sure that you understand. So if we register 30 students in an English 1301 class, then we're going to have half of that class meet on Monday, and then the other half meet on Wednesday. So they'll switch off like that, so half of them will meet. The other colleges haven't figured out how to do that yet. And the reason I don't is because I believe that they're not, that the way they're dispensing the instruction is not the way it should be. So if you set everybody down and you do the same thing in a group manner, then of course, you can't split your class, you have to have two teams. So the other colleges are really struggling with how to come back and how to do these things that seem to be fairly easy for us, although we've got to get it down in writing, which they have done a tremendous job, as you've seen, to do that. In closing, and then we'll open it for questions for Dr. Adie, but I would like to make one observation. And that is, Dr. Carter had mentioned the Director of Risk Management, and she didn't mention his name. His name is David Hickman. He came on board on May the 4th, and he wrote her an email, I guess, today, this morning, and he said he had reached out to the Bell County Health District. Remember that, he's part of that team to work together. And anyway, he reached out to them and established contact with the director and the epidemiologist. They're more than happy to collaborate with us to ensure a safe and compliant reopening for our campus. As I received information from them, I'll make sure that everyone is informed so that we keep our plan in line and the state local guidance. That's, I mean, that speaks a tremendous volume to the kind of people that we have working there. I know that the deputies are on constant phone calls with the Coordinating Board and with TAT and with some other organizations, and they're getting the same kind of collaboration and cooperation with them. And so I just want to thank everybody for all the great work that they've done.
Any questions, Dr. Adie? Okay. Next item on the agenda is Recommendation of Topics, forthcoming agenda items or announcements. Dr. Towers?
I have none.
Mr. Beebe? I think he may have dropped off. Ms. Coley?
None.
Ms. Hollinger?
Pass.
Mr. Parrish? I've got a couple of things to bring up. Number one is there is this cyber security briefing and acknowledgement that's now being required. And HR will send an email out with details on that and our paper copy for those who request it. It's a briefing. All you got to do basically is look at it, acknowledge then in writing that you have seen it, and we'll try to get that out to you this week. I'd like to have it completed by the time we have our July board meeting. We'll have paper copies there for everybody to sign off on that they have read and understand the briefing. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, and I spoke to Debbie Havens, and she's going to help distribute that communication. So look for an email from Ms. Havens.
If you need a hard copy of it, all you have to do is request it, because it's what's a PowerPoint presentation, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. The next item is the Chancellor and Board Order for Annual Evaluation Forms. We're going to have those mailed out to each board member, either this week or person next week. I'd like to have those back by the July board meeting, and it's your chance to make your comments. We do this annually, so just a reminder, it's something that we have to do. And we'll get that squared away and get it back. I mentioned earlier, we need an executive board meeting in conjunction with the July board meeting. I'll prepare a letter and mail to each of you with the details of what needs to be discussed, since we can't do that in an open forum. And the email went out today on that phase reopening. Again, the campus plan is a pretty good plan, but if you require a paper copy, all you have to do is ask Ms. Havens, and she'll be glad to get you one. Without, if there's no other items to be brought to the board meeting, then we stand adjourned.
Thanks, Rex.
A regular workshop, there we go. A scheduled meeting for July the 23rd, the, our online meeting, and the board workshop for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, will be in person. Okay? Now, any other comments? Seeing none, we just stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.